I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Pirschman.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mac. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comments. Presenters are welcome to address the city council for matters relevant to the city of Carver's authority for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's meeting agenda. Specific requests for information may not immediately be available, in which case follow-up will occur with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act on requests. However, we will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. Is there anyone here for community comment tonight? All right, moving on, no presentations and reports, no public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Mac, second. Second by Councilmember Pascoe. The new one, sorry, I was gonna say Ms. Pascoe. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving right along to business items. Eight point one is our organization resolution one oh one dash twenty-five. That's good.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm just keeping my eye on the screen here to see if that'll pop up.
And there it is. Just like that.
Each year, the city council is required, under Minnesota statute, to annually designate an official newspaper and depository, and to annually elect an acting mayor, assign members to board and committee duties, and appoint individuals to perform various responsibilities within the organization. So here we are at the first meeting in January of 2025. So I've prepared a spreadsheet here that you can take a look at and make some recommendations on who you would like to appoint to each of these positions. And then at the end, I'll ask for a motion to adopt this resolution with the noted appointments.
All right, let's go from the top. Acting mayor, last year was Christie.
I would love to do it again because one day.
You'll be fine. I will be mayor for that day. It hasn't happened yet. But, does anybody else want to thumb wrestle Christie for acting mayor?
I think Christie makes a wonderful acting mayor.
Christie is HPC.
I would be happy to continue on the HPC. Living in the historic district, I think it gives me a nice perspective on it. If anyone else disagrees, we can talk about it, but I would be happy to continue.
I agree that Christie contributes well to that. I am open to it only because I have commitments Thursday night from September to May. So it limits what I can do on Thursday nights. But we want to go through them all. And Christie, if you feel like you need to offload something.
Okay.
I would take that.
I'd be happy to, like, put it on and we can keep discussing.
Let's do that, yeah.
That works.
Let's, can we just work through them as we go through them and just have the discussion? Thumb wrestling take place now. I hear Christie not really wanting to give this.
I prefer not to give it up.
Yes, then let's, okay, yes, keep Christie on it.
Let's keep Christie on it. Parks Advisory Group, I would like to remain on. That has not, like, gotten off the ground yet. I think that 2025 is gonna be its year, and I'd like to continue on with that. Does anybody else have a strong desire for Parks Advisory Group?
No.
All right, that was a hard fought battle. Planning Commission is open. I know that, boy. Eric, you're Planning Commission alum? Lori, you're Planning Commission alum? Any interest?
It's a really great group.
I mean, we shall be watching those meetings, but it is a group that has fun. It is a really, really great group, and Aaron's doing a great job with that group.
So I know we have a great planning commission, and if nobody steps up, I'm happy to do that. If anybody else, Kayla, if you want to spend more time immersing yourself in the city, there's another opportunity.
I'd love to, but I don't want to, I know you two have served on it before, so I don't want to step on your toes. But I'd be happy to take it over if that works for both of you.
It works for me because of schedule conflict.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
That's your assignment.
Okay, it's my assignment. All right, Carver County Leaders is up next. That meets, is that group still meeting?
It's almost more twice a year. But it is technically still meeting.
Okay. Does your scheduling conflict run into?
No, not with.
I would like to stay on that.
And that is one that we can have. I'm trying to think. I think last year we had two people on it because there were two people who weren't interested. I don't think that we necessarily need to have two people on that one. So. Not hearing anyone else interested in that. So let's move on to Transit Board, Southwest Transit Board.
I would like to nominate Eric.
I'll serve the nominee.
Wow, okay.
No, I really appreciate, I feel like I know more what's going on there. And I think maybe it's just the timing of, you know, what they're sharing.
Wait, did you change your mind?
No, 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 I'm giving you my full enforcement. But I think also just your background.
Well, I'm happy to continue.
Yeah, that one is a lift. Does that still work for you?
Yeah, it does. I'm usually not traveling Thursday nights.
And I think, and Kayla is an introduction for you. We, I think, have this unwritten rule of if you can't make it to a meeting, either let us know here at these meetings or let Brent know. And Brent will forward that email and say, hey, Eric can't make it to Southwest Transit Board. That one's a little bit harder to kind of pick up than jump into. But we'll say like, oh, I need to cover HPC for you, you know, whatever. So of course let Brent know, and he lets folks make sure that we have somebody representing the city at all these meetings. Southwest Transportation Alliance, I can continue on with that. That is kind of the former two twelve corridor group that kind of works to advocate on behalf of our area for both state and federal funding for transportation. Okay. Township Fire Board, I would like to remain on. Christie here.
Yeah, I have, I'm fine continuing on that.
It's always hard to type when people are watching. All right, and then Carver Business Alliance is one that I would like to continue on with as well.
Kayla, you should have fought hard for that.
All right, unless there's any objections.
What about the Regional Mayor of Council, Regional Council of Mayors?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one oh one dash twenty-five dash organization.
I'll second. By Councilmember Mac, a second by Councilmember Sayer. Kayla, just the remaining three on their District one twelve community leaders. That's the mayor and the city manager from each of the communities in the school district. Regional Council of Mayors is a group of mayors. Yep. And the Fire Relief Association by their bylaws, Brent and I are both on that. Yep. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving right along to eight point two. Thank you, Brenda. Petition for annexation for JCP Holdings.
Thank you, mayor and council. It's doing the goofy display thing again.
You always say goofy and then we see a picture of your kids.
I know. It almost feels like I do it on purpose. I'm like, ooh, look how cute my kids are.
They're pretty cute.
Let's see if that works. Oh, there they are. So cute. Okay. Do that. Thank you for your patience. Alrighty, so tonight we have a petition for annexation. I'm going to, as we talk through some of the details of the annexation request. So some details for folks who might be new to the annexation process. We have an orderly annexation agreement with Dahlgren Township. So we have determined the growth area to be the area in our 2040 comprehensive plan that the city anticipates that we will grow into. And eventually we become property in the city of Carver as opposed to the township. So bringing new property into the city, have all city zoning ordinances, et cetera, applied to that property, and then a law for development as well. So the orderly annexation agreement essentially gives us the to-do list of what happens when someone says our property is ready for annexation, what do we do next? So there's fees, timelines, notifications, et cetera. So first step is the city and township receive an application for annexation. The property needs to be directly adjacent to current city limits, and utilities need to be available. So we're not able to annex properties that are 20 feet or 20 miles away from our current city limits. Utilities have to be available, streets have to be available. Needs to be adjacent to city limits, which is laid out in our orderly annexation agreement. So the city and township receive that application. At that point, I let the township know if the application is complete. They have 30 days to review, so that gives them a cycle of a township board meeting to review the information, give me any feedback, questions, comments, et cetera. That time has now passed for this annexation process, so it's before the city council for action tonight. The township did not have any comments, questions, et cetera, about the process. After city council action tonight, I'll forward the application to the Office of Administrative Hearings, which is a state agency for their review, and they can take up to 30 days for their final review. So after council moves forward with a resolution, we forward the information. It can take up to 30 days. There sometimes is some back and forth about some of the information, but typically a pretty straightforward process because of our orderly annexation agreement. Makes it really clear what we're doing, how we're doing it, and when the application can be made. So when I was talking about the growth area, so on the left, that's our future land use map and our comprehensive plan. So anything that has color on that map eventually will be in the city of Carver. So the black dash line is, well, was city limits. We've annexed quite a few properties since the time of our comprehensive plan development. But you can see that there is significant area that we're continuing to grow and expand into. But again, annexation needs to be directly adjacent to city limits for us to entertain an annexation application. Something else to note is that the city doesn't proactively annex property. The property owner needs to make the petition. So we'll never go to farmer XYZ and say, hey, we're ready for you. Give us your property now. The farmer has to make that decision, say that they're ready, usually working with a developer at that time. So the map on the right shows the area that is up for annexation tonight. It's 29.5 acres. Historically, we've called it the JCP Holding Sites. JCP Holding Site over the past couple of years, that's what we've been calling it. But up for new development with this annexation and property. So the application details, there was a co-application from JCP Holdings, the current owner, and United Properties, the developer. Connor McCarthy is here with United Properties, if you want to invite him up for any of the discussion. With this project, the city council reviewed a concept plan submitted by United Properties at your August 5th, 2024 meeting for the site. And that concept plan showed two industrial buildings of about 400,000 square feet for office use and warehousing. So should this project continue to move forward, there are a lot of things that need to happen. So annexation doesn't happen, and then the building can suddenly go up. We're working right now through the environmental assessment worksheet, or the EAW, which is in progress, which is a process that breaks down the entire project and any impact it might have to the built and natural environment. So it looks at things, air quality, noise, water, and then over to traffic, how it will impact development in the city. We also need to move forward with rezoning. Anytime a property is annexed into the city, the default zoning is agriculture. Not much you can do with agriculture if you're looking to develop a property. So rezoning would be required, and then plating, so preliminary and final plating would be required. On the screen now is the concept plan that you saw at your August 5th meeting presented by United Properties, and then some facade examples that were also included in that site plan application. So should the council move forward with the resolution tonight, staff will make the application to the state. Staff and the development team, like I mentioned, will continue to work through the EAW or the environmental assessment worksheet. City council right now is slated to review late February, early March, that EAW, the findings, some questions we get from other jurisdictions that are able to take a look, give us some feedback on it. And then again, rezoning, preliminary plat and final plat will be required. With that, I will open it up for questions or discussion. Oh, and a question from Dave.
I just have one thing to add to. This property is subject to a pretty hefty special assessment agreement as well for the Levi Griffin Road project. When was that? Maybe it was before my time.
2011.
2011-ish. And the agreement says that that assessment will be levied by the city, but not until after the land is annexed into the city. So we will be back before the council with an assessment proceeding too, which is a formality. And I know that staff has been in discussions with the developer for some different ways to structure that when the time comes. So there'll be more to discuss. I just wanted to put that on the council's radar so that it's not a surprise when it comes back to in the near future. But again, we can't proceed with that until after the state issues its annexation order, which would follow this process.
Thank you. All right, questions, comments? Connor, you want to come up then?
Sure.
I mean, you came to a meeting. I have one question. Okay, okay. Let's just let Connor go first.
Please introduce yourself.
Sure, I'm Connor McCarthy. I'm a developer with United Properties. I really came just to introduce myself. My daughter was born on August 5th, which is when this concept plan was first. It was first here, so I got a text. I got a text from a coworker saying, "Meeting went well," and I was in the delivery room. So I just wanted to be here to introduce myself and just express our excitement for the project, say thanks for the opportunity. It's been great working with Erin in this process too. So really just to answer any questions you have.
Super. Go ahead.
Okay, so we're looking back a couple of slides, and you were talking about who might, what the uses are going to be. Go back one more. Thank you. It just says office use and warehousing. I guess with the economy, the way it's been, when I drive through different cities, there's a lot of empty space. I mean, I can think of a huge 10169 right now that is sitting vacant and empty, and it has been for a year or two, and commercial development seems to be waning a little bit right now. Do you have, do you have companies that are coming in immediately? I, we may have talked about this, but I can't remember. What I just don't, what I'm a little concerned about is just empty buildings sitting up on the hill.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about it.
I'm sure you are.
But it's a, it's a good point. These buildings, if it ends up being two, like our concept plan shows, or, you know, one building, it would be probably a mix of warehousing, some sort of production use, and some office use within the space. So when it says office and warehouse, I'm not, I don't take this to be an office building where people are now doing that work from home. This is more of a blend of uses. If you see the Lakeview Industries just to the west, it's going to function really similarly to that type of project. It'll look fairly similar. So vacancy rates in the light industrial world are actually below 4% right now in the Twin Cities. So less than 4% of all light industrial spaces are vacant right now. So it's very different than what we're experiencing in office.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Are you able to retrofit the inside of the building as businesses come in?
Yes, yes. So we are marketing, we're actively marketing the space right now for build-to-suit or for specific users. But if these were developed speculatively, or if one of them was developed speculatively, it would really be a box that would be retrofitted for whomever would move in. And that could be a multi-tenant building that could have five or six tenants within it with demising walls. Or it could be one tenant that is entirely fit out for that space.
Okay, and when do you think you, in the best-case scenario, your first tenants might move in?
In the best-case scenario, I think, I think a groundbreaking could happen this coming construction season by the first tenant and start building their space out within.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Any other questions?
So the EAU, Environmental.
EAW.
EAW, sorry. So when do we get that back?
So staff has it right now. We have done a couple of reviews just internally. It gets posted to the EQB, which is the Environmental Quality Board, which is a state agency. At that point, it gets pushed out to other LGUs, local government units. But it's essentially anyone that this project would touch, and then anyone who reviews our comp plan. So it's adjacent jurisdiction, so the city of Chaska will see it, the Watershed Districts will see it. They'll have time to review the entire thing and provide comments. At that point, we'll go back and forth. We'll review the comments, see if we have some information that can figure out what their question is or what their concern is. And then the city council will make a decision if an EIS or an environmental impact statement is required. This all sounds so.
Are there any letters?
Are you writing?
I know that to be true. I know.
I already warned the staff that if I don't know the acronym I'm asking, so.
So you will see it after staff review, after everyone around us reviews as well. You'll be able to see their comments too, and then how we respond to them. So working between StanTech, United Properties, Measure Group, and the city of Carver, we'll all see the comments. We all will respond to them.
But you have this already.
Yes, we have a draft of it.
If there was a deal breaker, we would probably already know about that.
Correct. We've seen enough EAWs. This one looked pretty clean. We thought that might happen. Lakeview's was the same story in 2018, and it's a very similar product in a very similar location. So there weren't any red flags with that project, so we confirmed that to be true with this one as well. It might come up that someone at the Watershed District has a concern that we didn't think about, but that will be vetted through the comment process in period.
Okay.
And just, just to clarify too, mayor and council, the trigger for the EAW is just based on the size of the project. It's not necessarily due to reasons that we would have anticipated issues. It's just the state rules require it just of a project of this specific size, given the square footage. So I think that's pretty consistent with what Erin is saying.
All right, anything?
No questions.
Kayla?
No questions.
All right, let's see. Connor, I am just curious. So Erin talked a little bit about, you know, the city doesn't go up to these landowners and say, all right, it's time for us to give us your building. Can you take that just a little step further and kind of talk to us about the process? Is it a matter of you seeing what's for sale and being like, oh, that would be a really great corner? Do you initiate these conversations? I think a lot of times folks think that it originates here or with city staff. And I'm just kind of curious how those conversations with my owners go.
Sure, yeah. So for me, a big reason why we had intra took place just to the north in Chaska with what Opedin developed at, I mean, it's Exit Prior. And so we thought, you know, let's start looking for property that we can market for those types of uses. And the real estate brokers in the community are kind of the interconnectivity of all of us. And so we got connected via those relationships. And so then we met with the owners and, you know, helped educate them about what this process might be. I think we said, we like your property, but there's a lot to figure out. And we learned about, you know, this would have to be annexed. We'd go through the EAW. So we put together a purchase agreement that gave us 12-plus months to work through this whole process. So we were introduced via a couple of real estate brokers and consultants, but really it was driven by just the development surrounding the area and the growth.
Thank you. Kind of tagging on some of Christie's questions about what is going to go in here. Do you have any potential tenants in mind that you are able to pull back the curtain on a little bit?
Yeah, we have one tenant that we're working with right now. It's still in kind of preliminary stages, and we're competing against other sites. So I probably shouldn't say the name, but.
Fair enough.
But there are active users kind of that search for space, and it's called the southwest metro area, anywhere from, you know, Golden Valley down to Shakopee-Lakeville. And so we're aware of those types of users and have put this project in front of them. But a lot, oftentimes, we'll build these projects speculatively without a tenant. And it's really my job to design these buildings in an attractive manner so that, you know, there's other buildings too. Why do you want to locate here at this business park? And so to answer your question, if we built this without tenants, what might they look like? I often give a rule of thumb saying that, like, 75% to 80% of the space might be more warehouse space, 10% to 15% might have like a production or a light manufacturing use, and then 5%, 10% might have some office space, front-end offices. So it's really, there's probably projects in the area that we could give tours of if you're curious to.
Okay. My last question is, just looking at this from, how many employees would this be bringing to the city of Carver? No, that's a really hard question when you don't even know what those employees will be doing. But do you have any kind of arithmetic of so many square feet equals so many employees?
I, I often just look at the amount of parking that we provide as kind of the maximum. So here we're showing, I think we're showing about.
It's like 280.
250 stalls per building. That would be like maximum, what these buildings, from a code standpoint, could have occupied in the building, so call it 500. But I think it's probably, if I were to give a range between, you know, 150 to 200 is probably more what I'd see based on a speculative lease-up, 150 to 250 employees. But this also, the site is very accessible and visible and could be home to a, you know, headquarters-type user, which is one that we've been talking with. And that might have a larger density of employees. With office employees can fit into a smaller space, whereas the warehouse might have less employees per square foot.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. That is it for my questions.
I don't have any questions.
Laura's gonna make a motion.
If there's no other questions, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 102-25 approving the annexation of property in accordance with orderly annexation agreement 1428.
Motion by Councilmember Sayer.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Pirschman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations on making it through one more step in the process.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too. Okay, item eight point three, the 2025 street maintenance project. Mr. Schmidt.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. I have a presentation I'm going to pull up for everybody. Let's see. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and run through the presentation, then we'll open it up for any discussions. Feel free to stop me if you want to ask me a question right away. That's fine as well. So we're talking about the 2025 street maintenance project tonight. This is kind of a kickoff discussion, the front end of the process. So we're looking to start producing the plans and specifications for that project. So in the presentation, I'm going to kind of go through some background information, just give a quick refresh on pavement management plan goals that we have in the city of Carver, talk about the project specifically, and then talk about how we're going to implement it in next steps. So for a status update, the city, the city council reviewed the updated pavement management plan last year in July, excuse me, as part of the kind of the 10-year plan update. So you saw kind of a glimpse of the 2025 plan at that time. This will be consistent with what was presented last July. Some of the major goals we have, obviously pavement management plans. We want to extend the life of our pavement as much as we can, thereby reducing the city's long-term costs. That helps set clear expectations on budget. And then we want to try to minimize the risk to our residents as much as possible. We do that by trying to group projects in geographical areas, in neighborhoods, as much as we can. And then lastly. And then lastly, remembering that reclaiming a street, so, um, grinding the whole pavement structure up and making a new street section is about twice as expensive as mill and overlays. So we try to do those mill and overlay projects before the streets deteriorate so far that you need to basically start over. Uh, this is a busy slide, um, I'll kind of breeze through it. But we have a lot of existing planned components and then just some new things that we have for 2025 that I wanted to go through. Obviously, um, we pay for this with two different funds. We have a local city fund, so we have the street fund, the city, and then we have a municipal state aid account, which funds our municipal state aid system projects. So there's two different funding sources for these projects, which we'll get into. One thing we try to do is chip seal our collector roads in about year three. So those are heavily traveled routes within the city's, uh, transportation system. So they see the most pressure, the most stress, so we try to keep that sealed up as much as we can. Currently, we don't have enough funding to do all the city streets. So you'll see that the regular neighborhood streets do not get chip seals, but we do have enough funding in our current plan to do all the collector streets. City parking lots, um, we're implementing fog sealing of those, similar reasons, a lot of turning movements in parking lots. So just keeping those, uh, cracks sealed up as much as possible is important. And then a new thing that we just started last year was the trail systems, fog sealing kind of the major trail routes as well. And then lastly, the ADA transition plan is something that we look at when we get into these projects. So if there's any pedestrian ramps, for example, that are deficient and have cross slopes that are really steep, we try to address those issues as best we can while we're in there doing the adjacent street work. So some new things for 25 to note are, um, we've seen just general maintenance has increased, obviously, with many other things, so we did increase that from $25,000 to $35,000 a year just to fund those general things that come up, so patching work, um, you know, potholes, those sorts of things. That all is within this budget of the of the pavement management plan. So that comes out of the local city street maintenance fund. Another thing we did is we increased our project contingencies from 10 to 15% right right on the front end from a budgeting perspective. That helps for accounting for some of the, kind of the things you don't think about all the time on basic cost estimating. For example, you might need to do some sign replacements along the corridor in conjunction with the project. So now we're we're hoping to capture those costs so we can do those, um, when the project happens versus having to plan for all those little nuances within just kind of the budgetary side of the equation. So we did that, and then we increased inflation rates from 2 to 3% year over year just to help account for some of those those issues that we've been experience experiencing lately. Okay, so the 2025 project itself, we're looking at two different areas of the city. Number one, at the top of the screen, that Sunny Ridge Drive, that is 29 years old. So that is, um, outlived its its useful life at this point. The the pavement's really distressed, and we're recommending that a reclaim of that is is needed at this point. We aren't recommending a mill and overlay just because it is, it's too far gone. If you milled it and overlaid it, uh, the cracking would show through very quickly and, um, it would start to break down very soon, so.
Do you want to just want to mention what the average lifespan on the street like Sunny Ridge would be?
Sure, so, um, we're trying to get the mill and overlays by year 20. So if if they start to go, what we're seeing is a number of years after year 20 is when it really starts to switch. So you'll see some of them, you know, might be 21, 22 years, but like this, this one was already basically too far gone when we started the pavement management plan. So we really tried to accelerate the mill and overlays up front, knowing that Sunny Ridge Drive was going to have to happen at some point, it was just a matter of time, basically how long you're willing to let it go before you, um, do a a long-term fix on it.
Does our plan take into account, for example, I know Sunny Ridge Drive has a whole new development that went off the side of it, that I'm sure accelerated its deterioration as construction vehicles and things were going through there. Do we take that into consideration when we plan out what we're going to do maintenance on and when, those sorts of situations that come up?
Yeah, so so Hawthorne Ridge Development, that happened in 2019 or 2020. And at that time, we we knew that road was already in a bad condition, but that's a good point, so. Just kind of tracking, so when you kind of re, so we we rate the streets every five years. So like, this year in 2025, we want to kind of re-rate all the streets again. Um, and then it'll kind of help to see like if roads are going faster than what we kind of expected, to help kind of get a trend. But to your point, I think we need to keep an eye on those those streets that are really getting the heavy traffic. Hopefully, like, for example, the stuff that's happening right now, like Monroe Drive and Ironwood Drive, they're they're two collector roads. So they're a heavier pavement section, they're meant for truck traffic, so that's a good thing.
There aren't a lot of situations like Sunny Ridge Drive, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I think it's more of just pavement management is a a continuous process. It it isn't like a thing that's like, okay, here's our 10-year plan and this, you you never have to think about it again. Each year, you always kind of got to check in again and and ask yourself, okay, do we need to switch this street for this street coming up? Because we're seeing that it's not behaving like we thought it would, so that's kind of how we approach it.
Thank you.
In addition, so for the local project, we'll be looking at moving down into the Carver Bluffs neighborhood. So that will be our first, um, big project down in that area, working on our streets, um, mill and overlay of those streets south of Ramsey Avenue, as you see in orange there. Lastly, seal coating, so we have a newer piece of Ironwood Drive that was done a few years ago, and we want to seal coat that and the the Ironwood Park parking lot. So the new park that was done a couple of years ago, we want to get that sealed up right away when the pavement is is new, so. That's kind of the scope of the local improvements. And then for the state aid fund, um, we have a few areas that we're looking at doing some, uh, pavement sealing. So seal coating Sixth Street, so surprisingly, that's already ready to go. We did that road a few years ago, so we're looking to seal coat that and the adjacent trail that was done in conjunction with that project. And then looking at the the High Street-Curche Hill Drive, which is kind of a, I'll call it like a minor collector road, it kind of cuts between Sixth and Fourth Street. And, um, it's on our state aid system, so we'd be using the state aid funding to to seal coat that, that stretch of roadway as well. Uh, the table there presents the the costs for the project. So the breakdown is about $600,000 out of the city street maintenance fund, and then the balance being, um, the $97,000 out of the state aid fund for a total project cost of approximately $700,000. I made one note below, so another thing that we implemented this year within the budget was being more proactive about expectations on utility work with pavement management plan projects. So in the in the 2025 budget, we have $55,000, $45,000, and $15,000 for sewer, water, and storm sewer-related improvements. We'd be looking at in inspecting like the sanitary manholes, for example. And if the rings and castings are in poor shape, when the pavement's being worked on, we'll go ahead and fix those right away. So then we don't have to cut a hole in the street later. So when the road's being worked on, we'll cut the patch out, we'll fix the casting, and then we'll pave it fresh, so it's all one nice pavement mat and we're not doing it in five years and cutting a bunch of holes in our five-year-old street, so. That's, um, it's something that we were doing in the past few years, but we weren't capturing those costs as well as we should have, so we really made an effort to to point that out in the budget for this year. So they are in those enterprise funds for 2025, um, as presented here, so. That is basically the end of it. So tonight, what we're looking to do is authorize the preparation of plans and specs. If council authorizes that work to occur, we'll go ahead and get the project designed, go through the plan approval process, so council will see that again. I'll present the final plan to council, and if that is approved, we'll go forward to public bidding. And then I'd bring the the project back for an award consideration in the spring of 2025 for the council to consider, so. That is my presentation.
Spring of 2025 sounds so long away.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
So, Aaron, uh, on Ramsey Avenue, is that beyond Millan Overlay? Is that a reclamation for 26?
This segment of Ramsey Avenue?
Uh, right, from Jonathan Carver Parkway, you know, where it
Yes.
comes up into the neighborhood, because that's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, so Ramsey Avenue is a Millan Overlay in 2027 right now.
Really?
Yeah.
That surprises me just because living in the neighborhood and driving down Carver Bluffs Parkway, I would me not being a street engineer, I would say Ramsey Avenue is in worse shape.
Then?
Than Carver Bluffs Parkway. There's, or at least a lot of new potholes have developed this year that are going to need to be repaired.
So, yeah, and we said it was, it's a reclaim, did I clarify?
You said Millan Overlay, so it is a reclaim.
A reclaim.
That's, okay, that's what I thought it was.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a reclaim schedule for 2027, so we, yeah, we know that that road is, it's too far gone.
Okay.
It's really what it it comes down to is we're trying to get these Millan overlays first, um, because we can still save those roads. So that's why it's currently shown in there as as 2027. So 2026 has some other Millan overlays, um, to the, you know, to the north of Ramsey Avenue. But then we kind of work our way out and do that one last in 27, is is currently how it's shown. Now, if we see a lot of issues this year and it starts falling apart, maybe we got to move it up, but.
Eric, I've had numerous complaints, um, from from residents coming out of the blocks, talking about how bad that road is. And they've, for a couple of years already, it's, so maybe that is something we need to look at.
Yeah.
It's accelerated, for sure.
Lots of complaints at the door too, when I was talking to people, they, people were very upset about the state of Ramsey Avenue, so.
Yeah.
Something to look at, please.
Mr. Schmidt, I have a question, since you had all that out. Uh, Mount Hope, is that 2026?
Mount Hope is 2026.
And is that a Millan overlay or reclaim?
That is a reclaim project as well.
I I get questions on that one.
Yeah, that's another one, me too.
Those are the two.
Correct.
Any questions, comments?
Good comments.
All right.
All right, I can make.
No, I was just going to say, this makes a lot of sense. I, you know, I think we all know areas of town where the streets are in pretty poor shape. But I think what Aaron says about doing the Millan overlay while we still can makes a lot of sense, so it's not like we don't care about Ramsey Avenue.
No, 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 I agree.
It's just that it's a better investment to take care of, um, you know, Ramsey Circle because that's still kind of salvageable, if you will, so. All right, somebody was going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation of plans and specifications for the 2025 street maintenance projects.
Motion by Councilmember Perschmann.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mack, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes, let's get those rolls fixed. All right, communications. Does somebody want to walk through the strategic plan update, or are we going to hold on that one?
I think we're going to hold on that one unless Aaron or Brenda had talked to Brent, but.
Let's try.
You're asking the attorney?
All righty, thanks, Mayor and Council. We're going to do a quick review of the strategic plan. So we've been over this several times, a lot of them have been completed prior to this meeting. So a lot of them have been more completed for a while, but we can absolutely go through them. Uh, if you have any questions, otherwise if we want to go through line by line or section by section, let me know. But I think we're on track, this goes through the end of 2026. There are not many that do not have either a reason for them not being completed or if they're in process or something that's on our radar as we continue.
Aaron, this isn't for you, but I think maybe this is a question for the rest of the council. When we're looking at this and we see the completed ones, but then we see empty lines, from my perspective, it might be nice to see a little bit, something like in progress
Sure.
or in progress since March 1st of this year, just something to show that, I mean, we realize.
Not started, whatever.
Yeah, or if it's not started, that's okay too.
Sure.
Just some kind of notation about when it began or where it's at.
Yep.
So I guess for me then too, not having any of those kind of notes, it makes it hard for me to have questions.
Yeah, for sure. I can help you a lot through the responsive development one, but any other ones probably should wait for Brent.
It looks like, um, jobs can be updated. So we had Mucka Monkey and.
Yeah, I wonder what this, I'm going to guess that maybe it's a typo.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we certainly made progress there last year, non-single family housing units.
Should we wait?
Maybe then you can update some of those lines, and that'll make more sense when we have more questions at that point. That works for the rest of the council.
Yes, fine.
Fine by me.
Let's do it, that sounds good.
All right.
Thanks for trying, Aaron.
All right, um, moving on to council updates, Kayla, would you like to go first?
I'm happy to be here, I swore in right before this meeting, and it's fun to jump in finally and be able to get to the real work. So no updates because I haven't done a ton of city business, uh, that you guys haven't been present for. But, um, I appreciate the time and look forward to having more updates in the future. Thank you.
Christie?
Uh, there's an HPC meeting next Tuesday, the 14th. I won't be attending, but Eric will be attending, and so he will have an update after that. We did not have a meeting in December. Uh, I don't have any meetings, um, outside of our council meetings reporting, but I do want to, remind people that there's information out on our city's website about commission positions, being commissioners. So, um, there's both the heritage preservation and the planning. And I believe, I actually looked online, it's a really simple application, but, um, there is a deadline, uh, Friday, January 31st. That's it.
Eric?
I don't have any updates from Southwest Transit, uh, I'll be meeting with those folks this week. Uh, so nothing from me, other than I want to, uh, just welcome Kayla Pascoe as our new council member. I appreciate, um, anybody who is willing to step into this role. It's a little bit of a thankless position, there's a lot of work to be done for the city, but, uh, everyone leaves a mark and moves this community forward. And I'm I'm happy that you're you're on board to to help us do that.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, just a few things, uh, for me. December 16th, after our last council meeting, I boogied over to Chaska where they were having kind of a going-away celebration, um, of Mayor Mark Winchittle and also Councilmember Wong. But at the end, I got there, and I thought I got there late, uh, but, uh, Mark was still talking, and he ended up talking for an hour. He was thanking his staff, and then at the end, uh, he spent kind of another 20 minutes giving away mayoral pardons. And I was lucky enough to get a mayoral pardon from Mayor Mark, uh, something about being the mayor. So good on him. They swore in, uh, Taylor Hubbard as the new mayor, I think it was this evening, so. Participated in Congressman Emmer's, uh, monthly call on December 19th. Generally have a conflict with those, so was able to participate in that this last month. Also on December 19th, River Wild Learning Center invited me to their Solstice Lantern Walk, which was really, really fun, it was kind of their holiday party, but that was also the day, if you guys remember, we got five inches of snow. So it was super cool to see all these kids with their lanterns and their families, um, and walking through the trails and going into the forest, um, with all kinds of snow and a pretty full moon. It was just really, really fun. Um, and then, um, boy, I think that was it, between the holidays and being a little bit out of commission for the last week, those are my updates. So with that, I would entertain a motion to a chair.
Do you want to go back to the work session?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, really good question, I absolutely do, and I almost completely skipped over that. Yes, let's pick up. Yes, let's pick up, I don't know if I have my agenda in front of me, the parking item.
Sure, thanks, Mayor and Council. So the last item to talk about for a potential ordinance modifying the city code is this municipal parking lot issue. I talked a little bit with Brent about the fact that the city generally doesn't allow overnight parking at our city-owned lots. That would include Carver Station, our parks, obviously have parking lots, those types of parking lots. City Hall, we don't really have one because it's on the street, but the sheriff's office has indicated, of course, that they can't enforce that regulation with much teeth, again, like we've been discussing with other things tonight, without an ordinance in place. And so Brent and I are proposing and recommending if the council is amenable to this, as part of the ordinance change, adding language, just indicating that it's unlawful to park in any city-owned parking lot from, we haven't honed in on the exact hours yet, but it would probably be like a, you know, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM sort of thing, unless there is written permission provided for various exceptions. I mean, one thing that comes to mind is if there's a big residential street project happening, and people rely on street parking in a neighborhood that's close to a park or another city-owned lot, that we, you know, could permit some limited parking for a period of time, things like that. But that would go through staff, and they would be able to approve, again in writing, certain, you know, situations where there's an extenuating circumstance that would warrant that. So it's our thought to add language like that to the ordinance, but before we formalize that and proposed anything and brought it to you, are comfortable with that or not?
Thank you for not letting me forget about this. So this is one that I feel pretty strongly about, that we need to have something in place. I think we're increasingly seeing more folks park in the Carver Station parking lot, especially semis, and it's not a, it's not a truck stop. I know that there are some instances where we allow folks to park downtown in the city-owned lot, that's just kind of right back here by City Hall, when there's a snow condition or a snow event, but I think that that can be some of those, when permission is granted kind of events, so I'm absolutely in favor of this.
So that was my only point of contention with this, is that in the historic district, we do have a number of homes that don't have any parking at all, and they have issues during snow events. And so when, speaking with Brent about it, because obviously they contact us, his solution to that was then to be able to use the parking lot that is off of Third Street here for that overnight parking, snow parking. So for me, I mean, to just exempt, it's not an overly used parking lot, it's not this, you know, heavily used area, but I think it does provide, in our unique downtown area, an extra space for some of this parking. So I would be inclined to just exempt that parking lot from it. If they have, I mean, if they live near there, they have guests, they can, you know, park overnight there, and, you know, from 2:00 to 6:00 AM. So the parking lot's so small, and it serves a really small demographic down here, I mean, you're not going to park in that parking lot and then go up to the top of Sixth Street. So I would prefer to see that one just exempted from this.
Returning, please let me know if this is out of order, but returning to our previous discussion about putting a limit on on-street parking times, how would we handle those residents who do not have access downtown to off-street parking, should they go on vacation for two weeks?
Let's see here.
If they can't park in a municipal lot, they're not allowed to park on the street for more than seventy-two hours. They don't have off, they do not have on-property parking. How do we handle them?
I don't think parking in a municipal parking lot is allowed now either, maybe.
I know, but now we don't have a limit on how long they can park on the street. And previous, in the work session, we were talking about limiting, for example, seventy-two hours to an amount of time you can stay on a street.
I think here, too, Kayla, this is one of those examples where we have to take a look at what's going to be the majority of folks in this.
I understand, but we also have to be aware of.
I'm sorry, just if you don't mind, speak one person at a time. Just not the two or three people who might go for a trip. I think that there are, I think that that's one of those things that I think we would have to kind of deal with as it comes up. There's nothing to say that this person's vacation wouldn't be in that vehicle. There's nothing to say that that person doesn't park at a friend's house or parks at the airport. I think that just kind of figuring that out for the probably half a dozen people downtown who don't have garages or driveways.
Some of them were not even in the streets, we don't even have actual, like, driveways. They have only on-street.
But like, we're talking a half a dozen homes.
Yeah, and I.
Downtown area, and that, you know, I think we have to take a higher thirty-thousand-foot level.
And I understand that, and so I guess what I would like to see is that we need to, whatever we decide to do for putting a limit on on-street parking, if, since we already don't allow parking in municipal lots, which I have no problem with, we need to have a plan in place, because we also want to make sure that we're not selectively enforcing the ordinances that we have. So we need to have something in place for those residents, since we already know they exist. We need something in place to be able to have a place for them as well.
I think my solution for this would be not exempting the Third Street parking lot, but continuing to go kind of for what Dave recommended, is that having folks ask for permission, so that would solve, I think, the issue for both of yours.
It becomes a snow emergency.
Yes, but also like, hey, I'm going to be out of town for the next seven days. Can I park there? And it's September. Or same thing of, you know, hey, I don't have a garage, I'm going to park there until the street is cleaned or the curb in front of my home.
I'd rather use parking space because of the garages.
But sure, yes.
My thing is, too, is to say that, so then like, if the homes in the downtown that don't have a drive or off-street parking, then to have to like, to call the city, okay, I heard the snow is coming, can I park there? That seems a little cumbersome to me, so I'm not sure what the solution is to that.
I think for that, and maybe that's more revisiting, and I know we just did this, but our, our snow, what am I trying to think, the ordinance of our snow.
The snow emergency parking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think maybe that's helping with this, Dave, but maybe there's a way of writing it into there, that the amnesty lot, or the area where those folks go, is that Third Street lot. And I think that there was also, Brent has directed folks to go at the end of Broadway, in front of the getaway and in front of the Public Services Building. Maybe that, if that's not written into our snow emergency ordinances, that becomes a little bit more, because I think that is where you go, that is where you go, and again, not for more than seventy-two hours, but that is where you can park.
I think that's an absolutely appropriate place to have that noted, is in that ordinance, rather than in the municipal parking lot. So I'm happy if we, with that, if we can take another look and get that changed around so that that's available for folks.
Just, yeah, for sure. Just to clarify, so it's the Third Street lot that council member Mock brought up, and then what was the other one, the public maintenance?
There are probably twelve to fifteen spots at the end of Broadway, in front of the public utilities building, Public Services Building.
Perfect, thank you.
How does that sound on the set?
I have something on the municipal parking, completely separate. Could there be exceptions made? So the scenario I'm thinking of is Steamboat Days or at Community Park, or like often when there's a softball tournament, quite a few people will responsibly leave their vehicles there, get home Uber or friends.
Yeah.
I would want that to be an option, to park a car during those middle of the night hours. So I don't know if that's part of large event, special event, or just a sign during those, or you know, maybe a time when there's a beer truck at the ball fields, you can park overnight.
Yeah.
Well, that's a really good catch there, because, you know, Steamboat Days, we encourage people, if you're going to be partaking, is to not drive.
And there's this, yep.
And then obviously, there's the parking down here, it becomes a premium, so they have to go other places. And we've been doing, we ran, we run buses, too, from the park and ride, and what if someone's getting picked up from there also, right? Like, to get them out of downtown. So I agree, that's, there's some.
And maybe that can go somewhere else, too, but I just was thinking of that scenario and want to.
Maybe that's carve-out in the municipal parking lots. Those are the two nights of the year that overnight parking is allowed in municipal parking lots.
For the city celebration.
Yes. Well, yeah, Steamboat, I think we've got other ordinances where Steamboat Days is called out, I can't think of it.
We do, we are, there's, we are.
During Steamboat Days, which is traditionally, we can have Labor Day, blah, 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 Friday and Saturday night, overnight parking as well.
Yep. Don't rip up our roads.
Is that something that's legal?
No road construction, don't, yeah. Leave Sixth Street alone, North Street alone, leave Third Street alone. Sorry, is that a little bit of a trigger, Erin?
No, we can write that exception in, and I think public safety warrants it, too. It makes sense to me. I mean, the key there is that it's a community event, and then you've obviously got a temporary liquor license that comes with that event, so a lot of people are parking, and then if they, you know, consume, we wouldn't want to encourage them to drive and tell them that if they don't drive, they're going to get a ticket, so we can make it work.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't think I have any new concerns. I'd like to keep the ordinance simple, and as having been on city council for two years, I'm again surprised that we don't have this in place already, so I support it. I think that a couple of carve-outs that we've discussed make a lot of sense, especially for folks that have no other choice because they don't have a driveway or garage. So we've addressed that.
All right, do you have the direction you need from us on that?
I do, thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, and thank you again. I would have gone right past that. Okay, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Kayla, they're pointing.
Oh, hi, they're pointing at me. Hi.
Oh, where's my little piece of paper?
I would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Second by council member Perschmann. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, good evening.